Six. Is that you, are you playing the role of a mother or are you playing the role of a dollar? Or both? Okay. Surely they will. No, you don't. Okay. Um, they'll send your voice tonight, no?
Yeah.
Yeah, they'll send your voice tonight.
This 4:00 PM, we'll call a work session meeting to order. If we would, this all stands for pledge allegiance for among the citizens.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic, its stand, nation, uh, universal, liberty and...
Our heads please. After the meeting day, the two subjects will be discussed in the TDA bylaws and the letter of support from the county commissioners, BHHS, and we'll... Being said, over Steve Mason.
A couple things I just want... Back to, yes, um, 2020, but I guess the, the real question is, is Drew, and I know you asked me to come in to talk about it in regards to the bylaws and you have a direction of what, what you, what you thought about discussion or what the discussion was or...
Yeah, you brought to my attention that the bylaws that were approved by this board in 2020 were incomplete, so I thought the board needed to be made aware of that and the completed ones probably presented to them.
And so, and so what you got there is you've got a packet that basically, um, is documents that will kind of go through the, the structure of what, um, the progression of, of the bylaws themselves, which, you know, is kind of, uh, it's, it's extensive in regards to, and this was on, based on a meeting that we had on the 26th of June 2020 in Mr. Carter's office and Mr. Irwin was at, was there as well. And we discussed the, the, the documentation that's, that's on that cover sheet and the table of contents. In that table of contents, there's a, a kind of a pathway of kind of what progressed, one being the House bill being established naturally and there's copies of the House bill all the way to its, um, uh, finality. And then also the resolution by the TDA, for the TDA decree to TDA in Allegheny County. And then the third thing, there is the ordinance to establish the Oxy Tax and then the Allegheny County Budget Ordinance Amendment that came along as well. And then the GS 5, 5, uh, 153A dash 155, which is a uniform provision for the room oxy tax. And then it goes into a minutes format, which is the next item on the table of contents, which is when they started the progression of, of creating the bylaws. And that was done in 2012. And then a draft of that bylaws, revision of that bylaws, and then minutes in February of when those bylaws were approved by the board in 2012. And there's approval, uh, voting on that and then a copy of the current functional bylaws that we're using currently right now. And that's the last copy of you've got in your, in your makeup. So, uh, it's kind of a progression of what's going on. It's research that I went back and found in regards to how it laid out, but I also wanted to put the, the supporting documents in there for not only the, the ordinance, but also the, uh, session law and then also the, uh, the resolution. And so it progresses right down to where now, what I would say and the reason I brought it to, to Drew's attention is the fact that the copy that was given to an individual was had, had actually something missing from it and it, we, it looks like it's the same copy that was addressed by the, by the board in regards to approval back in 2020. But what I would say is the copy that you have on the back of that package is the cop is what we're currently using as our guidelines. And we have so since I've been given those when I came into the position. Those were transferred down through the other members of the TDA board in our, in our booklets to the current members. But this is what I found the research of going back and investigating all this.
Now, if you found a signed document from the commissioners where they approved it?
Signed document from the commissioners? No, sir, because there wasn't one, I don't think.
And there's, it wasn't approved by the commissioners?
Which one are you talking about? 2020 or do we go on back further than that?
Further.
Okay, there isn't, there is one that we have from any other document that's been found.
And signed document from 2020?
There are approved minutes from 2020, from that meeting where the incomplete bylaws were approved.
From this body?
Yes.
Where's our signatures?
Bill's signature go on the minutes.
That was the only one? He didn't need the others?
No, minutes are approved by the chairman only.
So, so we do have approved bylaws. Okay?
But like we've discussed, they don't have to be approved by this board, but they were in an incomplete version.
Drew asked me to come have this conversation just to share where we're at and then where, what the, you know, what the situation was.
And Heather's opinion was they don't need to be voted on again if there are changes in the future. They don't have to keep coming back to be...
Because right now, any change?
I agree with that. However, whenever you say they don't have to, now apparently at some time or another the county commissioners decided that they would be bylaws. And I sent an April the 14th email, and this is from Christopher B. McLotton. He's the professor, professor of public law and governments, government at the School of Government. I agree with your conclusion that the county commissioners have ultimate authority over the TDA. It is true that the TDA makes its spending decisions independent of and without review by the county commissioners. The county commissioners do not have veto authority over spending decisions made by the TDA. Technically, the TDA is a body that is independent from the Board of Commissioners, but for the reasons you identify below, as a practical matter, the county commissioners have oversight authority. So if we decide we want you to have bylaws, you, we have bylaws.
Bylaws were designed in the, in the origination of what we did and we designed those at the very beginning. They've been instated all the way up till 2021 when you, when you voted on them. Okay?
2020, yes.
Yeah.
But, under North Carolina law, there's no requirement to have bylaws unless you're a corporate entity. So sometime or another, the county commissioners that's in there that said that you will have bylaws, you've had bylaws. We've approved the bylaws now, but you say it's incomplete, so we're going to have to amend the bylaws. Is that what we're saying?
Heather's opinion was that you didn't, you, you don't have to address the bylaws at all because this board approving them doesn't make any difference.
I agree with that, but in the bylaws in here, his board has to approve the amendments. It shouldn't even come to us and you've got to have four fifths of the votes before you can modify the bylaws.
That's correct.
So, yeah, we've already approved the bylaws there. In effect, if there's something that's left out requiring that amendment by the bylaws, you go to your board, you give four fifths of the votes, then you can amend the bylaws, just make sure that we get a copy of it so that we know what you're operating.
And I know how that works and we will make sure that happens.
Okay?
Procedurally, I just thought this board needed to at least acknowledge there were completed bylaws available when the incomplete ones were by mistake approved. The bylaws haven't changed since 2020.
So you're just notifying us that you are going to remedy a problem with the bylaws?
Right now, you have...
One section that was left out.
You have a copy on the back, the very last copy of that is the exact bylaws.
What was left out?
You go down, if you look at the copy before the last copy, and you go down to the bottom of page, of the third page where it says Section 5, Financial Officer, turns to the next page?
It was totally blank, yeah.
There's nothing on the other side?
There's nothing on, yeah, okay.
Okay, if you go to our original, it has something on it.
And that's what I'm going back and forth and I noted that, so, yeah.
Other than, other than that?
I think that we had so many copies floating around because I've got five different copies here.
Because there was, and if you go back and look in the archives, there was several draft situations where the drafts were showing different things and scratched out or added or whatnot. And then I personally believe in this particular issue, it was the way that the, the document was copied. I think it got cut off at the bottom and then didn't get to the next page because there's a couple pieces that are missing there.
Right.
So, I think it was more...
My compliments, thank you for the history because it clears up a lot of matters that unfortunately later years, whenever we don't have the benefit of the corporal, corporate knowledge that it, it cast outs on there. You've done a lot of research, I appreciate that, but I think all you've got to do is send us, do your amendments, you're ready to roll.
Well, we'll make sure that, that you're aware that, that what the minute needs to be made in regards to those two different documents and y'all be aware of it. Okay, second copy that I gave you, document, are we good there then on that piece? Okay, the second piece I gave you is a document that came from a private company, Magellan Strategy Group, that actually did this study back in, this is actually reflecting revisions and changes from 2017, but it gives you a breakdown by Mr. Kavanaugh, who breaks down TDAs throughout the state. I think it's a very good, good piece of documentation that gives you an idea that there are very different ways the TDA is designed throughout the state by municipality and also by county. And there's a lot of variance, a lot of differences and a lot of, lot of different, uh, ways these things are designed, but falling within the guidelines of the structure the state has provided. Now, it also gives you some data, um, information in regards to, uh, the different fundings for each county and what those numbers are during that timeframe and it's time dated. But Mr. Kavanaugh will be talking up at Beach Mountain on, uh, tomorrow, actually, Beach Mountain TDA, and we'll be discussing, uh, these, these topics and upgrading this information and getting a better idea of what things look like today. He's giving a talk, so we're going up to, to see him, or I am, uh, this, uh, tomorrow, actually. So, we'll get an update in regard to some of this information, but I thought it was very enlightening when you go through and look at the different numbers and just how different, uh, a lot of these TDA groups are formed and what they regulate and what they don't, so, um, within the guidelines and the structure of the law, so, just thought you might be interested in that.
You know, the only information that is confusing, whenever you start looking in the back and you start seeing the various things, and you can pass this on to Mr. Kavanaugh, it doesn't tell us whenever they enacted their TDA. We had that because they, they came up with standard guidelines in 1997, but whenever I look down and I see one, they're, they're using every penny of the, of the occup... But whenever I look down and I see one, they're using every penny of the occupancy tax money for a convention center. It would help to know if that was before 97.
That's right. And you have to assume that that was the case with a lot of those, based on how they're structured. But at the same time, that's a good point. So I'd be more than happy to bring that to his attention when we get a chance to talk when I go up tomorrow.
So you'll be presenting a amendment to your board and seeing if you can get...
What we'll do in our next meeting is address the issues that are different in those two documents, the one that you addressed in 2020 and the one we use. And we'll address those items and address and identify those items. Is that okay?
I was just noticing the increase in your taxes over the years. It's really...
It's been a lot.
It's gained a bunch, certainly has. What is the average tax rate charged, do you know, across the state, three, four percent, five percent?
The average? Don't know, but then we'll probably find that out tomorrow. Yep, I'd be more than happy to bring that back. Because I think that's some of the numbers we're going to be talking about in regards to how that is. And I know there's a Q and A session, I think, at the end of the program, so we'll get a chance to hear a lot of good questions, hopefully, and we'll get some answers.
I know the rate that increased, total revenues come in, you're about double what you was here two ago.
Absolutely. And we were budget, our budget was sitting at the $80,000 mark. And we're currently hitting over $2,000, $2,000 now.
If you go back to 2011, 2011 wasn't dropping the bucket for what it is now.
And I think that ultimately the responsibility that we've taken with, in regards to how we handle that money, is, you know, we take a lot more serious look at what we've got in front of us and looking to be more proactive about how we're handling that. We just had a conversation today with the first garbage pickup program participant, which was a food closet. And we sat down with Jason today at the DOT and went over just kind of how that is going to work and how that looks. So I think after today's discussion, we'll be in very good shape to go into the next opportunities that we've got there. But it looks like we're going to be able to sign out some money for that program this week, so.
Are we settled on this? Anybody got anything else?
I think it's settled. Good job. Good job on all the research. Thank you. I'll put it with the rest of my...
Next is Commissioner Michelle LeFond on the letter of support for the HHS. Turn that over to you.
Yes, I'm the commissioner who sits on the Board of VA Health. They have asked me to, they've asked all the county commissioners in the VA Health Ketchum area to draft a letter of support for a new plan that... It's called Children and Families Specialty Plan. And it would be managed by one entity instead of different LMEs. So I've tried to do my research on it. It's in-depth. Anyway, they said that the CFSP, which is Children, Families Specialty Plan, does not leverage the existing strengths of the LME/MCO system or the resources by the state of North Carolina. And the LMEs and the MCOs have been managing health care, or managing mental health care in North Carolina since 2011. And by this moving forward, it would mean that VA would no longer provide care management to CFSP members. VA would no longer coordinate placement for children and youth in DSS custody. And VA would no longer serve as a liaison with hospitals when a child in DSS custody is taken. So they are asking us to draft a letter that states that we are not in favor of this one-size-fits-all plan and that they believe that a tailored plan is the way to go. All the research I've done, it seems like, you know, we think that we would lose a whole lot of, VA would lose a whole lot of, you know, A and maybe this one-size-fits-all wouldn't be best for all the children in DSS custody. Ask, we consider... Against the...
It's going to provide that service if VA doesn't.
Well, it's out for bid, right?
Overall, I mean...
They're having to, I'm also on the DSS board, and we're having to find foster care for children all over, not only North Carolina, but South Carolina, Tennessee, because there's not a foster home. We're having to put children in custody. I can't imagine what would happen. So there is a letter that has been drafted by VA to use as a template. And if everyone's in favor, I can pass that on to Drew. Alert our county. Foment lead.
I have no objections, yeah. They did set this staggone thing up and changed it. I, no, just don't feel good. Certainly...
Also...
We've done letter... The template, and I'll put it on with our signatures. And then the members who agree with it can sign it, and the members who don't, if there are any, don't have to sign it.
Okay. I'll email that to you.
Can you update Bob? You've marked little emails to what we're, so they'll be in the... No, good one.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Your second? My second. All in favor?